Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, Councilor Chambers, for tonight's public hearing. It's July the 11th, 2017, and we'll call this public hearing to order. And Madam Clerk, maybe we have the roll call, please.
Mayor Robertson in the chair. Counselor Louis?
President.
Counselor Stevenson in the chamber. Counselor Deal? Counselor Jang? Counselor Reimer? Counselor Ball not in the chamber. Counselor Carr? Counselor Affleck? Counselor Dejana? You have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And first, we acknowledge we're on the unceded homelands of Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Waututh First Nations. Thankful for that. And secondly, just in terms of our Committee of the Whole motion, in order to avoid the procedural uncertainties which arose at a previous public hearing due to a loss of quorum while in Committee of the Whole, the city clerk advised that while councils required under Section 18.3 of the procedure bylaw to move a motion to go into Committee of the Whole, at a public hearing, it's not required, we are not required, to sit as a Committee of the Whole during the hearing. Therefore, it's her advice that the motion to go into Committee of the Whole is put to a vote and failed by council yet again. So would someone like to move that motion to go into Committee of the Whole? Moved and seconded. And all those in favor of that motion? And any opposed? All opposed, so that does not carry. So we sit in council rather than committee as a little technical quirk to our proceedings, but that's what we're working with. So with that, we have on the agenda tonight five items and a number of speakers to several of the items. So I'll just make some announcements before we dive into the first item. For those who are here at council to speak, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report that's being considered by council. We ask that you state whether you are in support or opposed to the recommendations. And speakers may speak once. If you have additional comments, you can submit them in writing to the clerks on paper or you can email them to publichearing@vancouver.ca. And if you're speaking on behalf of three or more persons, three or more organizations, you have up to eight minutes to speak. Persons and representative organizations must also be present and not speaking themselves. And finally, you don't have to use all of your five minutes. You may have questions from council, and there's a timer on the podium. And I'll give you a heads up as you approach your five-minute time limit. And finally, if we don't conclude from hearing all speakers tonight, our back-up date is Thursday, July the 13th, Thursday night at 6:00 p.m. That's when we will reconvene, but I expect, given the speaker's list, we should be able to hear from everybody on all of these items tonight. I think that's a realistic assumption. So with that, we will dive into item number one, the Heritage Designation and Revitalization Agreement for 604 East 23rd Avenue, the Mitchell residence. And I'll ask our clerk here to give us, read the application and the summary of correspondence received, please.
This is an application to designate the exterior of the building at 604 East 23rd Avenue, Mitchell Residence, which is listed in the B evaluation category on the Vancouver Heritage Register, and to enter into Heritage Revitalization Agreement to secure the rehabilitation and long-term preservation of the heritage building and vary the zoning and development bylaw as necessary to permit development of the site, including infill development and bonus density as proposed under Development Permit Application Number DE419627. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval. Council has received no correspondence on this application since it was scheduled for public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Marco D'Agostini here, who is our heritage planner from the Heritage Group, to present the application. Given we don't have any speakers registered or correspondents, we can waive the presentation. Okay, thank you. And is the applicant, Sandro Moore, here? No comments for you? Okay, any questions from council to the applicants or to our staff? Any questions? No questions, so we will go right to hearing from members of the public. We don't have any registered speakers, so I'll just call for three times in case there's anyone here. Is anyone, are there any speakers here for item number one? Does anyone wish to speak here on item number one? Last call. Anyone here for item number one? Speakers? Seeing none, we will close the speaker's list, and as we've had no correspondence since 5:00 p.m., close public comment period. And final comments from staff? Anything? No. And from the applicants? No final comments. Questions from council? Final round of questions? No questions. Would someone like to move a motion? Okay, moved and seconded. And any discussion or debate? No takers, so we'll go right to the vote on item number one. And Counselor, waiting for Counselors Louis Stevenson and Ball. Counselor Ball, are you still working on it? Okay. We're all good. Ten votes, all in favor. Unanimous support for the motion, the recommendations. So we've completed item number one, thanks to the applicants and staff for the work on that. No controversy, which is good news. And we've concluded that item. So we're on to item number two, which is the text amendment for enabling innovative development with social housing amendments to the Downtown Eastside Oppenheimer Official Development Plan. That's the DEOD/ODP. And Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and the summary of correspondence received?
This is, this is an application to amend Downtown Eastside Oppenheimer District DEOD Official Development Plan ODP to enable the delivery of priority uses with housing on corner sites, allow frontage relaxations for 100% social housing projects, and include a definition for local economic development use. These zoning changes help implement the Downtown Eastside Plan and enable innovative projects in the delivery of social housing. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, council has received two pieces of correspondence in support of the application and three pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 4:00 p.m. today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Helen Ma here, our planner for the downtown division, and she's here to present the application. Right now, we have two speakers. So why don't you go ahead with a brief presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Helen Ma, planner with the Downtown Eastside Group in Planning. The Planning Department is proposing amendments to the Downtown Eastside Oppenheimer District Official Development Plan, or the DEOD/ODP. The intent of these minor amendments is to encourage social innovation that improves the livelihoods of local residents. We have heard from nonprofit organizations that they want to do innovative projects that serve the community by combining health services, opportunities for jobs and training with housing. The current zoning includes specific regulations that would prevent these applications from being considered. Specifically, there is a requirement for density above 1 FSR or floor space ratio to be for housing use only. As an example, a project including a healthcare center operated by a nonprofit serving the community with social housing above cannot be considered under the current zoning if the non-housing use exceeds the density limits of 1.0 FSR. Further, there are two areas in zoning that we're proposing to amend. These areas of zoning currently make it challenging for important projects to proceed. First, there's a maximum site width limit for new development. As an example, a housing project with 100% social housing on sites exceeding the maximum site width would be required to go through a rezoning process, which would delay the delivery of these really important housing units. Another area in the zoning is that there is currently an ability for existing businesses to have modest expansion in floor area without delivering housing. However, this option is not available for other important existing uses, such as institutional or healthcare places that may need some modest expansion without full-scale redevelopment. The proposed changes would provide flexibility to enable these innovative and priority developments that might not otherwise happen. The DEOD/ODP, or the zoning, covers the areas in blue on the map shown on the screen. The zoning further divides the DEOD into four sub-areas. Subarea 1 is Main and Hastings, which is a high-density mixed commercial residential area. Subarea 2, Cordova Street, surrounds Oppenheimer Park. It is intended to be medium density and residential. Subarea 3 is Powell Street, Japantown. It is intended to be medium density and for local retail and residential uses. Subarea 4, Alexander Powell. It's intended to be medium density, mixed residential, and light industrial. The Downtown Eastside Plan approved by council in 2014 lays out policies for the Downtown Eastside Oppenheimer District. Specifically, Policy 6.5.5 states that these priority uses should be prioritized in the area. So these priority uses include social housing, community health and well-being, as well as local economic development. The proposed changes brought forward today align with this policy intent for the Downtown Eastside. And further, we are proposing these amendments in order to enable innovative mixed-use projects that would include these priority uses and to expedite delivery of 100% social housing projects. The staff report includes four recommendations to amend the zoning in order to enable the development of priority uses in combination with social and secure market rental housing in Subarea 1, Main and Hastings. Secondly, to allow existing priority uses to expand to a maximum of 1.5 FSR in all sub-areas. Thirdly, to define the local economic development use. And fourth, to provide a relaxation clause for, from the maximum site width for projects with 100% social housing, social housing in all sub-areas. The following slides would go over each of these recommendations. More information can be found in the staff report. The proposed amended zoning is included as Appendix A in the staff report. The first amendment has to do with enabling developmental priority uses on corner sites in Subarea 1. So the diagram on the left shows what is possible within the current zoning. For corner sites in Subarea 1, the maximum overall density that could be considered is 7.0 FSR within a maximum height of 120 feet. Within this maximum, the first FSR, the first 1.0 FSR, is choice of use, meaning that this floor space can be any of the uses permitted for the area. The remaining floor area, in this case, is 6.0 FSR, must be for housing only, and there is also a requirement for minimum 60% social and 40% secure market rental units. There's currently no recourse through rezoning or the zoning to overcome the 1 FSR limit for other priority uses, even if the remaining floor area includes housing and that the project is still within the overall maximum height and maximum density for this area. This presents quite a challenge to some nonprofit organizations to provide important services and healthcare to local residents, and I can give you two examples of these scenarios. We have heard from an existing organization that currently has more than 1 FSR of floor area. However, they cannot redevelop because in the new development, they will have less floor area than they do now. Another scenario is, we have heard from a health authority and a government agency that their healthcare and housing project could not be considered because the proposed healthcare center would exceed the 1.0 FSR limit. The proposed changes want to provide an option for priority uses, which would include local economic development, community and health, community health and well-being to go up to a maximum of 3.5 FSR. This is shown as the gray and blue portions of the building in the diagram to the right. The remaining floor area must be for housing only. In this case, the remaining floor area is 3.5 FSR. The housing portion of the building must still meet the 60% social and 40% secure market rental requirements. I would also like to point out that no changes are being proposed to the maximum overall FSR of seven or the maximum height. We understand achieving housing is really important, and this is why the changes are proposed to corner sites only, in order to maintain housing capacity on other sites. Another reason to limit this change to corner sites is that corner sites can achieve higher density than mid-block sites. After allowing for other priority uses, there's still capacity to deliver housing at scale on these corner sites. In terms of how many sites this change would affect, there are 32 corner sites in Subarea 1, Main and Hastings, five of which are assessed to be more likely to be redeveloped. This change may enable approximately 120,000 square feet of floor area to be used for priority uses over those five corner sites. The second proposed change has to do with existing priority uses. In the current zoning, there's an option for existing businesses, which is limited to retail warehouses, commercial services, and manufacturing, to have modest expansion from 1.0 FSR to 1.5 without triggering redevelopment and delivery of housing. Community institutions providing key services currently don't have an option to do modest expansion. This is an issue especially when redevelopment and delivering housing is not feasible on the site. We are proposing to allow existing local economic development and community health and well-being users to also have the option to have modest expansion. The third proposed change has to do with adding a definition for local economic development. In the current zoning, it already has definitions for two of the three priority uses, community health and well-being, and social housing. However, there's no clear language about local economic development uses. The definition proposed in the report is consistent with the Community Economic Development Strategy that was approved by council recently, which focuses on working with social enterprises, co-ops, and nonprofit partners that are creating jobs and training for local residents in order to improve their livelihoods. I also want to put this change in context by explaining that this is a technical definition in order to close the gaps in the zoning's language about priority uses. It is not intended to be a definition to inform neighborhood-wide strategies. The fourth proposed change is about a relaxation to maximum site width for 100% social housing projects. Current zoning includes maximum site width. For Subarea 1, the maximum site width is 100 feet wide. Subareas 2, 3, and 4, the maximum site width is 150 feet wide. For projects on sites exceeding the site width, they must apply through rezoning or to divide up the site and build multiple buildings on the site. This presents a challenge especially to 100% social housing projects because a rezoning process would add delay to their timeline and add to the cost. We are proposing to allow a relaxation at the discretion of the Director of Planning or the Development Permit Board to the maximum site width limit for projects with 100 social housing. Staff will continue to manage the appearance of white buildings using design guidelines, and we will continue to apply existing maximum storeton widths which are in place for Subarea 3 and Subarea 4. In conclusion, the proposed changes would provide more flexibility in zoning for projects that meet multiple Downtown Eastside priorities, including social housing, health and well-being, and local economic developments. These minor amendments would support social innovations and enable these projects that would otherwise not be able to be considered. Staff recommend approval of these changes and are available to answer questions. So I have Karen Hosa, Assistant Director to Planning for Downtown Division, Tom Wanklin, Senior Planner on Downtown East, and Senior Housing Planner, Saleem Moblis, available for questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. Ms. Ma, any questions from council before we go to speakers? No question? Counselor Carr?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Just took a moment to switch my screen back. Yeah, I do have a question, and it arises out of the statement that you made in your presentation regarding the definition of local economic development being a technical definition that was not intended to inform this kind of local strategies. I wonder if you could explain that for me? I, yeah, I don't know how we could be including a definition that would then not drive the strategies.
Okay, so from our perspective, the definition we're adding to zoning is part of the technical amendment in order to provide clarity on what are considered priority uses. The application of this definition will be limited to situations under this zoning where more floor area can be permitted for priority uses on a small number of sites. The policies in Downtown Eastside Plan about community economic development for the community as well as the community economic development strategies approved by council, those will remain unchanged. So those strategies will continue to be in place.
Okay. Perhaps just as a follow-up, I noticed that the report doesn't have any summary of public consultation. Normally, a report that we see at public hearing does have that. And so I'm wondering, we do have in place uniquely in the city, a local economic development body, the SEDSAC, that arises out of the local area plan. And were, did you work with them or did staff work with them in the development of this definition? And, yeah, are they, obviously, are they supportive of it?
So I can give a summary of what consultation was done. We sent over 3,000 postcards out to property owners and tenants, as well as emails to people who subscribe to our Downtown Eastside email list. 60 SROs in the area also receive poster notifications inviting them to the open house. We have 24 people attending the open house and have received written comments on these proposed changes. In terms of specific meeting with, I believe you're referring to the CED Strategic Action Committee. We do not have a specific meeting with them.
Okay.
Notifying them through emails.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that is all your questions. Thank you very much. So we're going to go to our speaker's list on item number two. And first speaker is Jean Swanson. And second up is Christopher J. Summers. And welcome back, Ms. Swanson.
Hi. So I'm Jean Swanson. I'm with the Carnegie Action Project. I want to acknowledge that we're on the unceded territory of the Coast Salish people and the Squamish, Musqueam, and Tsleil-Waututh, and thank them for allowing us to be here. I want to use this five minutes to point out that this ODP amendment won't do anything to solve the main Downtown Eastside issues, homelessness and poverty, and again, to urge council to make providing housing for low-income people a priority. I also want to say that making a little tweak to a bad local area plan won't meet council's stated or the community's genuine goal in the local area plan of ensuring, quote, "that the future of the Downtown Eastside improves the lives of those who currently live in the area, particularly low-income people and those who are most vulnerable." We have about 1,200 homeless people in our neighborhood. One in 18 people has no place where they can lock the door. 1,200 people have about half the life expectancy as other people. 1,200 people get beat up, have their stuff stolen, have to move every day, and carry their stuff with them even when it's soaking wet. Homelessness has increased at least 19% since the Downtown Eastside LAP came into effect, and more Downtown Eastside residents are dying. We have homeless people sleeping in the doorways of businesses below the gentrifying condos that you wanted. I saw a woman sleeping in a suitcase the other day. Even you have given up on shutting down the tent city because there's no place for people to go. We have a life-threatening crisis. So then along comes this ODP amendment and says a developer doesn't have to put in quite as much housing if they put in other things that allegedly benefit low-income people, like health facilities and low-income, and social enterprise. So you're basically reducing the amount of low-income housing that a developer has to put in from minimal to miniscule. What's more important for a homeless person's health? Having housing or consolidating health services to one site, like Coastal Health wants to do at Goran Hastings? What's more important for a homeless person's health? Having housing or having an employer nearby who can, quote, "create employment, especially low-barrier jobs through inclusive social impact hiring and local employment opportunities"? But low-barrier jobs aren't actually required, according to the definition. All that's required is creating the employment for someone. Is this a thin edge of a wedge for more high-tech gentrifying businesses in the Downtown Eastside? Where does the definition of social enterprise say the jobs would be for local residents? I couldn't find it. The point is that the whole plan for the Downtown Eastside does not do what council and the local area planning committee agreed it should do when it started, namely, ensure that the future of the Downtown Eastside improves the lives of those who currently live in the area, particularly low-income people and those who are most vulnerable. Things are way worse now than three years ago. You wouldn't let us come and say this when you had the three-year LAP review in April. You tried to sneak it, having the review without informing folks who had been on the committee. And now you're rethinking the horrendous Chinatown plan that doesn't pay attention to local culture and low-income needs, and the same needs to happen with the Downtown Eastside LAP. How could council really improve lives for low-income and vulnerable people as the LAP proposed? Make ending homelessness a priority of city housing policy? Use whatever tools possible to stop expensive market rentals and condos until low-income people are housing good social housing? Stop using city reports to disguise the severity of low-income housing situation? Demand federal and provincial government put money into social housing and raise welfare rates to 1,500? Put more city money into making social housing affordable for low-income people? Change the definition of social housing so it doesn't exclude people on welfare and other forms of social assistance? And build the Aboriginal Healing and Wellness Center that hasn't even been started yet. There you go. I'm done.
Okay. Thanks very much for coming. Appreciate your, your voice here. And our next speaker is Christopher J. Summers. Do you want to speak later in the, okay, I'll come back to you. Speaker number three is Ian Harrison, followed by Paul Allen.
Hi, my name is Ian Harrison. I'm a property owner in the DEOA, or DEOD, and I registered to speak just a few minutes ago so that I could gain entrance to your meeting here, to get a better sense of how decisions are made in an area of the community that's really important to me. Based on what I've heard so far, I think that the amendments that are proposed would benefit not only the area, but also the city of Vancouver generally. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for coming to speak. And Paul Allen is next, and followed by Tara Shane. Maybe, I'm not, she can't read the last name here.
I'd just like to question council about their links or their relationship with the Platt family, or Mr. Platt. You could describe him as the biggest slumlord in Vancouver or otherwise Canada. He's just bought up half of East Cordova Street, two of which are heritage buildings, Class B. I imagine he'd have to have friends in powerful places such as here in order to change that to Class C in order to knock them down. So you could say, you could make the argument that we're here really to make decisions on personal business, families' interests, or perhaps already those decisions have already been made and this is just a farce. And lastly, I'd just like to ask the city of Vancouver, Europe has a population of 738 million people. How do you have an area that doesn't even exist in Europe with a population of 600,000? That area is an absolute disgrace. There's human rights violations going on every day that I see. I live in the Downtown Eastside. I've lived there for two and a half years. Maybe I have no right to be here. I'm British, I'm not Canadian. Maybe I have no right to ask you these questions. But I'd just like to know what the hell is going on. It's, I don't know what it is, it's a big, some kind of big reservation, but I'm telling you, this does not exist in Europe. So what is this ghetto you've created? It looks like very manufactured to me. And the more people that come here from all over Canada, I don't think you're helping them, keeping it all within the boundaries of the city of Vancouver, where kids are just getting off the bus, thinking they're taking candy, and it's cracked and they're addicted. Their life's finished. I just can't, and any foreigner that comes here cannot believe what they're seeing, what they weren't seeing when they come here. You know, it's all out of the papers, this big myth about Vancouver being $50 million properties sold here, there, and everywhere. But the reality is, people come here and they cannot understand what the hell is going on. And somebody's responsible for it. Is a big puppet master responsible? You could claim that all the decisions made here, you're You could claim that all the decisions made here, you're responsible for it? But again, going back to my point, I'd like to know what your connection is to Mr. Platt, the biggest landholder I'd make out in Gastown, and an individual who, when you look into him, doesn't seem to have a very nice or good background. But apparently, from what I understand, he has very big links to the city of Vancouver and other interests such as NGOs, charities, and basically anyone that's got an interest in the poverty trade that is the Downtown Eastside. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here at council tonight, and sharing your opinions on this. Tara Shane, or Shale, I can't quite read the last name on the sheet here, speaker number five, Tara Shane. Are you here? Don't see a Tara or Tara Shane. So we'll come back to Christopher J. Summers. We've, I've called on all the registered speakers now, so it's, it is your turn. Welcome.
I had a busy day, so I'm not totally caught up. But I have lived in the Downtown Eastside for, oh, well, off and on since the early 90s, but more recently since 2004, late 2004. I'm a member of St. James Anglican Church. And I would just like to put in the minutes, as unprepared as I am, to a reminder of the laws, the mosaic laws and statutes, which call on us all to, as brothers and sisters, sisters and brothers, to be the most important thing, not to be our own agendas, but to, if there's anyone who needs housing, to give them housing, if there's anyone who needs clothing, to give them clothing, if there's anyone who needs food, to give them food. That we've gone from 80% rural to 80% urban in the world in 80 years, and that our direction should be sustainable farming, building our own homes, and gathering food. And there's a superimposed system that just isn't working, called the wide way, and the narrow way is sustainability. That's just the long and the short of it.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight, sharing your thoughts. So I'll call for any more speakers on item number two. I'll call three times. Are there any more speakers for item two? Downtown Eastside, Openheimer Official Development Plan? Yeah, you didn't use up all of your time, if you want. Got to put another minute, two minutes or so?
I'll be about a minute. So just to quickly add, I live in basically Rowtown, which is the original downtown Vancouver. It's not actually Gastown. In my opinion, being an outsider, being a foreigner, it's the only culture that you actually have here in Vancouver, the only history you have. Some of those buildings are the best representation of heritage you actually have. Unlike the rest of the city, it hasn't been knocked down yet. Some of the buildings are certainly where Mr. Platt acquired half the street in quick succession. Two of those buildings are from 1901, probably the best examples of heritage you'll find in the city. As I say, right now, they're heritage Class B. Change them to C, you can knock them down, but I think they should be heritage A. It's just my humble opinion, being English, we generally celebrate culture and history, which seems to be very little evidence of that in Vancouver. But I hope you preserve the area, because it's a, really, I wouldn't live anywhere else. I have no interest whatsoever in living west Vancouver, north Vancouver, Richmond. I have no links to those places whatsoever, but the history and the links, the end of the Canadian Pacific Railroad, hence Rowtown, I'm not quite sure why you called it Japan Town on the board. Obviously, it was Japan Town before World War II. Subsequently, the population was chucked out back to Japan, but that's history. But the name hasn't, it hasn't been called that in 70 years, so I'm not sure why you're not calling it Rowtown. But I hope you preserve it. I'm not quite sure why you want to increase and increase the poverty trade, or increase bigger ghetto, as it already is. It's my opinion, that should be dispersed in the interests of all the young children that are getting off the buses from all over Canada. But yeah, I hope you're taking into account and looking to them heritage buildings, 605, 627, and 629 East Cordova Street. They're wooden buildings, they've been there since the founding of Vancouver, since you could say the British and the Chinese first came here. So I hope you respect them and listen to what I'm telling you. And also, I do hope that I get a reply in regards to the links to the Platt family, and find out what's going on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, you got a little more time? Sure.
I'd like to reference the pieces on the wall here of our host overlooking it. If you go to UBC, you'll see different natures, nations, the signage there saying, "Today your host is..." And so I would ask, as, you know, the David Suzuki Foundation always consult the First Nations when they're doing so. If you look at the business, call in the business section of newspapers now, nations are always consulted. Are the nations being consulted in this development of what has a huge population, population of the original indigenous peoples? And I'd like to remind everyone that upcoming in the courts is similar to something that just happened with the Algonquin, who have taken back the crown land of that part of Canada as their own. It is no longer crown land, it is Algonquin land. And they've also taken the unceded Ottawa. The details of this are, they're not taking Algonquin Park and not making it not a park, it's still going to remain a park, and they're not taking private lands. But there is an upcoming, I believe still, court decision where the Salish will, again, have their lands. And I would just, again, reiterate that, are, the question, are they being consulted, the nations?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Summers. Are there any more speakers for item number two? Last call, any more speakers for item number two? Seeing none, we'll close speakers' list, and as we've had a few comments since 5:00 PM, close public comment period, and we'll hear any closing comments from staff? No more? Okay. And any questions from council? Final round of questions from council for our staff on item number two? No further questions? Do we have a member of council wishing to move a motion? Counselor Jiang will move recommendations, and is there a seconder for that? Okay, moved and seconded. Anyone wish to speak to it? Discussion, Counselor Carr?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Could you please sever the subparts of A for me? That's subparts one, two, three, and four. The reason I ask to do that is that I don't intend to vote for the first three of those recommendations. And there are reasons, the reasons why I don't intend to vote for them is that, in the first case, regarding the definition of local economic development use, I really believe that consultation with the precise committee that is involved with local economic development and Strategic Action Committee should have been consulted in that, and they are the key body on the ground, on behalf of the city and on behalf of the people of the area. The next two subsections do, as one of our speakers pointed out, actually change the dedication of amount of space for housing to other uses. And I do believe that we have such a crisis in this area that I don't want to see a decline in the committed space towards housing. I am prepared to support the final recommendation in A, subsection four, which does say that we can real, the director of planning can relax the site width, maximum site width, on the condition that 100% of the housing units are social housing. I think that is a prudent move in an area that is so desperate for such housing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Reimer?
I just wanted, I will be voting in favor of the motion, but I felt like perhaps the public could reasonably have been confused by one of the comments Counselor Carr made, which was different than the one that staff made, which is that the definition referred to in section A1 in the motion is verbatim from the strategy that council passed, which was as a result of extensive consultation with SEDSAQ. So while this particular bylaw amendment arising from that strategy was not consulted on, the strategy itself was many months in development and consultation with SEDSAQ. Personally, I would find it much preferable, after going through all that consultation and passing it, to not then go back to consultation immediately again. So I think the process was absolutely correct, and I don't want, I appreciate that SEDSAQ may not have been as aware as they'd like to be about this referral to public hearing and subsequent public hearing, but certainly the content of it is consistent with a quite extensive consultation, which they were extensively involved in, in fact, kind of drove the recommendations that council passed some months ago that resulted in this recommendation that came to public hearing.
Okay, any more speakers to the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote then, and I think we will vote. Counselor Carr, you wanted to vote on A1, two, and three? Okay. So we'll do A1, two, and three first. Counselor Ball, is your computer working? Yeah, we're going to redo that one. On A1, two, and three. Counselor Louie and Counselor Ball. Okay. Okay, we have nine votes in favor, one in opposition on A1, two, and three. So that carries, and we go to A4 and B. We'll vote on next. Counselor DeGenova, Counselor Ball. Okay, we have all 10 votes in favor, so unanimous support for A4 and the Bs. And we have concluded with approval of the recommendations overall in item number two. So thanks to those who came out to speak tonight, and members of the community who worked with our city staff on this front. Thanks to city staff for the work bringing this forward. And we are on to item number three. This is the text amendment for 620 Cardero Street, that's formerly 1575 West Georgia Street. And Madam Clerk, could you please read the application and summary of correspondence received?
This is an application to amend the text of Comprehensive Development CD1 District 633 bylaw for 620 Cardero Street, formerly 1575 West Georgia Street, to increase the overall floor space ratio from 10.59 to 10.85, and the residential floor space ratio from 7.86 to 8.15. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, council has received one piece of correspondence in support of the application, one piece of correspondence related to other matters on the application, and this represents all correspondence received up to approximately 4:00 PM today.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We have Aaron Lau here, a planner in our downtown division, to present the application. We've only got one speaker registered, and a very comprehensive report. Everyone fine with waving presentation? Okay, we just can go to questions? That's fine, okay. I'll ask if the applicants, Sean LaPointe, Enriquez Architects, Ben Duffel from Boza Properties are here to speak to the application? You wish to say anything now? Okay. Okay, so we'll go right to questions. Are there any questions for staff or the applicants from council? No questions, so that means we'll go to our speakers' list. And the one registered speaker is Lori McKenzie. Is Lori McKenzie here? Lori McKenzie, not here. Well, I'll call three times. Are there any other speakers here for item number three? The text amendment on 620 Cardero Street. Are there any speakers here for item number three? Last call, speakers here for item number three. No takers, so we'll close the speakers' list, and as we've had fewer no comments since 5:00 PM, we'll close public comment period, and we'll go to any closing comments from staff. Mr. Lau, no? Any closing comments from the applicants? None there. Any closing questions from council? Counselor Carr?
I do, thank you very much. I thought I'd asked this at a referral, but I'll ask the question now, and that, and that is, I'd like an explanation of what the community amenity contributions are based on in terms of floor area in this project, because there's no, there's no increase in community amenity contributions noted in the report, because the floor area is the same, but somehow, I think that the floor area has changed, so perhaps you could just explain that to me?
Michael Naylor, Senior Resoning Planner Downtown. There is actually a community amenity contribution for this. This, when the report was initially prepared, we didn't think that there was. However, we were mistaken, because there was some floor area that we thought had attributed to rooftop mechanical. As it turns out, the CD1 bylaw already accounts for that, as it was approved at the initial public hearing. So instead, we sat down with the architect and investigated exactly what changed between the rezoning application and now that we're into the development permit stage. And the essential thing is that with this increase in FSR between the overall and the residential, there's actually a shifting of 51 square meters from office use to residential. The reason we put a cap on the residential in the CD1 is because a CAC was initially negotiated for the rezoning, and the residential use is a much higher valuable use than the office use is. So we felt at that point that there was a CAC that would be appropriate, and our real estate staff discussed that with the applicant, and hence we have $150,000 CAC on offer, which is recommendation B in the summary and recommendation. So that was a change from when the report was initially done, and it was brought forward by way of a yellow memo.
Oh, the yellow memo, thank you very much for reminding me, thank you. Okay, that's great, that's what I was thinking for, thank you.
Okay, looks like that is it for questions to staff, so we need next steps from council. Okay, Counselor Louie moves recommendations, Counselor Jiang seconds. And any more speakers to the motion? Moving the recommendations? We actually already went through the speakers on this, yeah? Yeah? Sorry to miss you there. So we're at the, we are at, ready to vote. Looks like no one's speaking to this. We'll go to the voting queue on item number three. And we now have all the votes in, 10 votes in favor, so that carries unanimously. Thanks to staff and the applicant team for bringing that forward, and all the public input that took place so far on this one, as it moves through the process. And we have completed item number three. That means we're on to item number four, and I think that's what most people are here to speak to. So with item number four, Madam Clerk, can you please read the application and the summary of correspondence received?
This is an application to rezone 870 East 8th Avenue from RM4 Multiple Dwelling District to CD1 Comprehensive Development District to permit the development of a seven-story building containing a total of 51 social housing units. A height of 21.3 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.8 are proposed. The General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Since referral to public hearing, council has received 40... Since referral to public hearing, council has received 47 pieces of correspondence in support of the application and four pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 4:00 p.m. today.
Okay, thanks, Madam Clerk. And we have Joyce Uyasugi here, a planner from our Midtown Division, to present the application. And given right now, we have 11 speakers registered on this, so you go ahead with the presentation, please.
Thank you. Good evening. This application proposes to rezone 870 East 8th Avenue to allow for the replacement of an existing social housing development on the site owned and operated by the Red Door Housing Society, a nonprofit organization. The site is located on the southwest corner of St. Catherine Street and East 8th Avenue in Mount Pleasant. The application proposes a seven-story building with 51 social housing units. The proposed density is 2.8 FSR and the proposed height 21.3 meters, or 70 feet. The proposal does exceed the height and density expectations for this neighborhood. However, it is being considered in order to help achieve the city's social housing objectives. The application, if approved, would involve the replacement of 22 existing social housing units and add 29 units to the city's inventory of social housing. And I'd just like to point out a typo in Appendix H of the report that identifies 19 net new units, but in fact, it's 29 net new units. The buildings surrounding the site are mostly three-story apartments and townhouses with some single-family houses in the area. To respond to this context, the proposed building is set back 20 feet from the edges of the property to the main floors. Levels 5 and 6 are set back an additional 9.3 feet, and the top story is set back a further 7.6 feet for a total of 37 feet. These setbacks help mitigate shadow impacts around the site. As the next three slides show, the shadows from the proposed building fall largely onto the street, northward onto 8th Avenue, and later into the day onto St. Catherine Street. The shadows do not fall onto any surrounding buildings across the street. With regard to public input, support for the proposal has been expressed for the provision of more affordable rental housing in the neighborhood and the appropriateness of the location for increased density. Concerns raised have included building height and massing, parking and traffic, and impacts on affordability, both for the proposed development itself and on the existing rental stock. Staff acknowledge that the proposal will be taller than surrounding buildings. However, the height and density are needed in order to maximize affordability levels in the housing units. The proposed building uses shaping to better integrate it into the neighborhood. As such, staff's assessment is that the proposed form of development is an appropriate response to the site and policy context for this area. In terms of relocating existing tenants, the Red Door Housing Society has submitted a tenant relocation plan as required under the rate of change guidelines and is providing compensation and assistance to tenants. They've been proactive in assisting the tenants in rehousing and have already moved many tenants to other Red Door buildings where there have been vacancies. They're also working with the remaining tenants to find suitable units either in their own buildings or elsewhere. Staff support this application as it is consistent with the aspirations in the Mount Pleasant Community Plan for the provision of more affordable rental housing. The applicant is investing significant government equity and leveraging this with mortgage financing to pay for the redevelopment. The replacement of the existing social housing, along with the addition of social housing, represent a significant contribution to the city's housing objectives. Staff recommend that the application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in the agenda package. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much for the presentation. And question... I'll ask if the... First, the applicants from Red Door Housing Society are here to speak to the application? Would like to say anything?
Thanks to Mayor and Council. I'm Dane Jansen, the architect for the project. We worked closely with... You can tell with planning staff to try and get to this point. This is a really unique opportunity, and it's a nonprofit that has initiated this development. We're fortunate that there will be some B.C. housing money in this to make this work. As you know, quite often with projects like this, there is an affordability gap, and it's able to bridge that gap, but it's really the foresight of Red Door itself to move this forward. Going to add, I think one of the things about the development, as you read in the council report, that this will provide 35% family units, which is a great importance to the community. Happy to take any questions from council.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. And any questions for staff or the applicants before we hear from speakers? No questions from council, so we'll go right to the speakers list. And as I said, there are 11 people registered to speak, and first up is Dave Webb.
That's me.
Okay, followed by Russ Irish.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and councilors. You just mentioned foresight, and I think that foresight has been lacking in terms of when they built it, apparently they used a shoddy contractor, and it was badly designed. And in the meantime, it hasn't been well-maintained, which is why they're claiming there's a repair bill of $2,300,000 to nearly $3 million, which in my opinion makes this amount to a rent eviction. I oppose the building, obviously. And in their own documents, they mention that they consulted, or not consulted, but they did an impact study on 8th Avenue and St. Catherine's, but they didn't do an impact study on the people who live on Broadway. Of course, we won't be affected by shadow, however, our view will be obliterated, both in my building and the view in the building next door. Grouse Mountain and Mount Seymour will be invisible to us. All we'll see is the slab side of this lovely setback building. You know, I'm a low-income renter myself. I'm not opposed to low-income housing, and various family members have taken advantage of low-income housing, but I don't think that rezoning should be entered into lightly, and I don't think it should be done at a developer's behest. I sympathize with Red Door's financial woes regarding repairs and remediation, but it doesn't follow that 870's current tenants in the surrounding community should bear the brunt of their mistakes. As I mentioned before, such a massive repair bill points to negligence in the first place. Fundamentally, Red Door's application is a kind of rent eviction. And as much as he's mentioned the social housing, the actually truly low-income social housing will be less in the new building, comprised largely of one-bedroom units, whereas in the current building, I believe they're all two- and three-bedroom units. And in the current building, every suite is income-based. In the new building, I mean, currently, two-bedroom units rent for $627 to $1,020. Proposed rents are $1,055 to $1,775. Current three-bedroom units are $670 to $1,200, and projected rents are $1,160 to $2,546. And the number of tenants served by the truly low-income units in the new building will diminish from 61 to 83 in the current building to 29 to 36 in the new building. And I also imagine, or I don't imagine, I expect that unforeseen expenses during demolition and construction will drive up the cost of the percentage of market rental suites. In other words, you know, I don't know, there's always unexpected costs, and they'll have to make up that shortfall somehow. I'm imagining that they'll increase the percentage of market rate on the remaining rental units and possibly lessen the number of actual social housing units. And I... One of my main concerns, because I live in the area and I am taking advantage of low-income housing, even though it's commercial, is that this building would be an existential threat to the area of this working-class neighborhood. It would be like a Trojan horse, be the first entry of a larger building into an area of low-rise that currently serves working class and low-to-middle-income people. I don't see how, having allowed one building in like this, other developers can be turned away. And I think if there is such a term as zoning creep, I think that this is what this represents. At the end of my blog, there's a building up for sale on Broadway, right where the old Almas Market used to be, Prince Albert and Broadway. And I phoned the real estate agent, and I said, "What can be developed there?" And he goes, "Well, currently, the zoning is RM, but we're expecting a more favorable zoning." So that alone indicates to me that this is considered as an entry into the market there. And also, a lot of those comments in favor of this came from some society that I'd never heard of before called the Abundant Housing Society of Vancouver, or Abundant Housing Vancouver, which I suspect is a front for developers, because I emailed them and I got no response. And the comments that came from them are all very generic, much of them repetitious, and sent by abundant housing rather than actual individual people. So anyway, I just don't want this overheight development in my neighborhood, and I urge you, seriously urge you, to reject this rezoning application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have questions from Counselor Deal?
Yes, over here. Thanks for coming out tonight. I just wanted to be sure I understand where you are located. You are on Broadway?
Yes, I'm at 855 East Broadway.
Okay, and I said... I'm trying to find... You said that's a commercial property, not a residential?
Well, when I say commercial, I mean it's rented... It's not rented under the aegis of any society or low profit, but the rents there, I don't know if you got my little PDF that I sent, but the rents there are nonetheless very reasonable.
Okay. Right? That's what I need. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's all your questions. Thanks very much, Mr. Webb, for being here. Second speaker, Russ Irish, followed by Scott Delang Boom. Good evening.
Mayor and council, thank you for your time. My name's Russ the Irish. I own a house on St. Catherine's about a half a block north of this proposed development. My house was built in 1910. I bought it 27 years ago because it's super cool. It has nine original stained glass windows and loads of character. The neighborhood has evolved in the last quarter century. We've gone from street prostitution to families on bikes, and I think we've turned the corner. No small thanks to our men and women in blue. I'm restoring this old house. It's turning out great. I'm getting lots of compliments. I'm investing hard-earned dollars into it, into the neighborhood, and you know what? A lot of my neighbors are doing the same thing. Vancouver's growing, I get that. In order to stay livable, we need density, and I get that in the Lower Mainland. In order to get density, we need to go up in the air, and I get that, but what is the cost of this? Okay, I encourage you to drive down my street on your way home tonight. Take a look at the street. The pavement is in deplorable condition, marginally acceptable in a third-world country, not what you would expect from a world-class city. Increased density will put more strain on that old, tired road infrastructure. I'm investing in the neighborhood where I can, but I can only improve my property. That's my job. What about the atrocious condition of the street? That's your job. I called City Hall last winter to get their help to prepare a petition for a local improvement project to finally get curb and gutter on St. Catherine Street. And you know what I heard from your staff? They said, "Don't waste your time. Mayor and council do not support street improvement projects." I don't know what's with that. Now I'm being told that the developer is being held to a LEED gold standard for this building. Now, I know people who own LEED buildings, and they say, "Never again." I know people who build LEED buildings, and they say it's a waste of money. Sorry, folks, but I don't see how that gives us affordable housing. Developers need to pay the cost to develop. That's a given. But please, get them to pay for something worthwhile. Rezoning, development permit, building permit, that's a lot of approvals. That's a lot of opportunity for you guys to do something. You've got tools at your disposal. Please use them. Get this developer to pay the cost to upgrade the road. Don't pay for LEED gold, not just the center line, both sides of the road. Oh, and by the way, when you're rebuilding that block, take advantage of the economies of scale and rebuild the block to the north, please. St. Catherine Street is in deplorable condition, and more traffic is not going to improve that situation. I'm doing my bit as a property owner and taxpayer in this city. The police force is doing their bit to improve the neighborhood. Please, do your bit. How about maybe the city doing their part? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Irish. Thanks for being here tonight. Scott Delang Boom is our next speaker, number 3, followed by Ryan Quirico. Good evening.
Evening, Mayor, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I live one block west of this proposed project on East 8th, and I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this proposal. Vancouver's facing an acute housing shortage right now. There's particularly the vacancy rate is very low. It's very hard to find a place to live and rent in this city. I was lucky enough to find an apartment on the 700 block of East 8th, but a lot of other people haven't been so fortunate, and that's why we need more rental housing and also more below-market rental housing. So I'd like to voice my support of this proposal. This is a great area to live. It's walkable, it's transit-accessible, and I know that because every day I walk down to VCC Clark, further walk than it will be from this building to take transit to my job in Burnaby. And the 99B line stops a few blocks away. So to the previous speaker's concerns about car traffic and strain on the road infrastructure, being in such a walkable location will kind of help mitigate that a bit. And it also means that the people who will be moving here won't be moving elsewhere further out in the region. They won't be living in the car-dependent communities further out where, you know, maybe they could afford to get a place if they can't get one of the new 29 additional units that come from here. And that means less overall congestion because of its central location and better air pollution... or better air quality, because not as many people will be driving because this is such a walkable and transit-accessible development. And regarding the size and character concerns brought up, yes, it's a bit bigger than some of the surrounding buildings, but it's no bigger or more out of step with the community than the building that exists just a couple blocks away at the corner of Broadway and Fraser. So as I was saying, I think this is a great project, but I do kind of have to wonder why this is only happening now. The application for this was put in in 2015, and, you know, we're right now in a housing shortage, and there's a housing crisis here, and two years just to get to the council for approval, it's way too long. There are 29 people who haven't had a home until now and won't have a home for another couple of years because it's dragged on through the application process. And this is a story that gets repeated time and time again in Vancouver, that all of these proposals that add housing, both market rate and social housing, get delayed and have to go through a long and arduous process. And I'm concerned that the priorities aren't quite where they should be on this sort of thing, where the approvals maybe need to focus more on getting more units out rather than really being concerned with where the shadows fall on those, and that perhaps we should be looking at adding more social housing in a more expedited manner than we currently are, and also more market rate housing, too. So while I applaud this project and think the added density is great in this neighborhood, it's also is replacing 22 existing... it's also is replacing 22 existing units, and that's one thing that has been a bit of a concern with some of these projects, is they're taking areas that already have some density and adding more to it, rather than looking at building such projects, or even smaller-scale versions of this, in the vast majority of the city that's currently limited by law to only detach single-family houses. And we should be looking, as a city, to encourage this sort of project throughout the whole city, and not just in the areas that already have social housing projects like the existing one, or are already dense. So in conclusion, I think this is a great project that brings some much-needed housing into this area and into the city in general. It's a good location, it's walkable, it's transit-accessible, and better to have more residents in this community and help, you know, invigorate the community and the local businesses than have people leave the city because they can't find a house or home. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for being here to speak. No questions for you, and appreciate your thoughts. Next up is speaker number four, Ryan Quirico, followed by Anna Zuell.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Ryan Quirico. I live across the street from the proposed development. I'm against the current rezoning application for the following reasons. No way does the properly located at 870 East 8th Avenue fit into the Broadway East revitalization plan. And even if the plan only allows for a maximum height of six stories or 19.8 meters for buildings in the Broadway corridor up to Prince Albert, 870 East 8th Avenue is on a major thoroughfare and therefore should not be rezoned to allow a building of 70 feet or 21.3 meters in height. According to Red Door Housing Society's calculation, existing residents will not be able to move back into the new building. Accurate calculations due to a number of variables including construction costs, labor, inflation rates, and unforeseeable expenses that occur on all projects will greatly alter the rental costs once completed. Red Door Housing wants to alter or raise rents in the market rental section of the building to reduce previous tenants' rents. This is a very poor way of saying you're affordable. Forty-three percent of the building will be subsidized housing. This will leave market renters with a hefty price to pay. The proposed building does not promote healthy living. How healthy will it be for the occupants of the building when their bedrooms are on average 12 feet bigger than a Canadian jail cell? Red Door Housing Society cannot give any hard numbers for rental rates in the revised plan, where the original plan shows figures of three and four bed, or three-unit salary at 84% of market rate with costs of nearly $2,600. When you factor in utilities and food, how is this affordable for a young family? Nearly 47% of units geared towards families. How will they have a balanced lifestyle? In closing, I would like to say that, given Red Door Housing Society's track record with Mecassa and allowing the building to get to a state of disrepair where it needs to be torn down due to mold and water damages, speaks volumes as to how they take care of things. Records show that Mecassa has been running a surplus. Where have these funds been allocated? What will the new building look like after a few years? And what will happen when it needs a new roof in 15 or 20 years? Will the cycle of neglect start again? Red Door Housing Society has done nothing to contribute to Mount Pleasant neighborhood. They, however, willingly contributed to the premature removal of residents at Mecassa, many with families that have lived there for 10 years or more. I urge you to refuse this rezoning and let Red Door Housing Society sell the property to a conscientious developer that has proven track record of projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have questions from councillor Carr.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Quirico. I just have one question, and that is, where did you read or see or hear that the current tenants could not return? Because the report clearly says on page eight, returning and qualifying tenants with incomes below this, and then returning market tenants, I mean, and...
It states that, but clearly, if you crunch the numbers, it's not affordable for them once they come back. And I haven't seen with the revised plan any of the actual costs for rental rates. The initial proposed plan showed rates, but the revised plan doesn't show anything. And it's going to go up in costs, because it's been two years, labor rates have gone up, construction rates have gone up, construction materials.
Right. It does state in the report from staff that tenants who have incomes below the Hill's rate will all be offered units that will rent where the rent is no more than 30% of their income. Is that... No, you can't actually, sorry. Oh, I should...
And with saying that, the market rental rates will go up in that building, right? So it's going to defer those costs to the rates that are market renters
Right.
Compared to those who are on RAP or safer.
Right.
Right? So those costs are going to be deferred. They can move back, I'm sure, but with the costs, with the new costs, like anywhere from about $6 to over $1,000 for them, for one-bedroom units, right? Most of them are two- and three-bedroom units in there right now, and those two- and three-bedroom unit rates are going to be around $1,700 to $2,600 with the original proposal.
Right.
We don't have rates for the new proposal. So that's why I'm saying it's not going to be affordable for them to move back, because they rent two- and three-bedroom units, not one-bedroom units, right? It's...
Right. Well, the report does say low end of market, but I take your point about the not having specifics.
Thank you.
Okay. That's your questions. Thanks very much for being here tonight, and your input. And our next speaker is number five, Anna Zuell, followed by Jeff Crompton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is Anna. I also live right across the street with my family. I am not in favor of this redevelopment. I do support increased density and affordable housing, however, not to the detriment of community. And a seven-story behemoth amongst three-story walk-ups will do nothing for our community. My concerns are as follows. I do not believe Red Door Housing Society can execute this project successfully. The society has a very poor track record all around, from an inability to properly maintain their buildings to a lack of proficiency in assessing who should be living in their buildings. We've been living across the street for over two years. There have been some pretty shady situations across the street, including units where there are six dogs, six pit bulls living, that are walked off-leash while children play on the street. In July of last year, Red Door made the news because of one of their tenants was making more than double the maximum allowable income and paying only $650 per month in rent. After living across the street of Mecassa for over two years, we have seen and spoken to many people living there, who should not qualify for low-income housing, and many driving brand-new vehicles. In addition, the Mecassa site is very poorly maintained, from the obviously dismal and uninhabitable state of the structure, to the garbage all over the lawns and alleys. It wasn't until we started calling regularly to complain that the grass was never cut and that the landscaping was never maintained that things started to change. My husband and I would actually take a garbage bag every day on our way to work and pick up garbage in the neighborhood so that our children wouldn't be playing with it, because no one maintained that site. The police have been to the Mecassa site countless times over the last couple of years. We actually called them a few weeks ago ourselves, because vagrants were stealing a baby stroller from the Mecassa parcade. When the police came and we asked, are they going to do something? Because they caught the people red-handed, they said they can't, because the garage door has a broken lock, and at that point, it's not break and entry. Just to show you. So the next day, we actually talked to the family whose stroller was stolen to let them know, you might not want to leave it in the garage anymore. My second concern is the detrimental effects of a building that is seven stories high in a neighborhood of three-story buildings. On the Broadway corridor, on the Broadway corridor, where there are buildings suggested up to eight stories tall, there is a transitional period where the buildings actually are suggested to transition in height from three to four to six, and then eventually eight. This will be one single building amongst all three-story buildings, and that by no means is to scale. And the shadow studies are also a farce. I was out there on March 20th. That is not where they fell. So I have no idea who made these plans. The sheer mass of this overbearing, mass is overbearing, let alone the shadow it will cast on the surrounding community. There are piranhas out there just waiting for this rezoning application to pass. I have spoken to three people, myself, who come and ask, well, regularly, because the poster didn't get upgraded for so long, what's happening with the site? Because they have properties in their area, and they're just waiting for this to get rezoned so that they could put in their own applications. Unless you want this community to change in ways that it will never be like this again, I would say don't approve it. The other thing is about saying that this is a family building. We have friends, quite a few friends. In this past year, we've lost two families from Vancouver. One moved back to Berlin, another one moved to Squamish, because the affordable housing that is found here is a problem, and we're fully aware of that. But the bedroom sizes and what they have created in this building, no wonder people are moving away. I wouldn't want my children sleeping in a bedroom that you can barely get enough air movement in. It's, you can't have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, in 900 square feet. It's just not feasible. The research that I've done on Red Door Housing Society, and the way that they look after their properties, as well as their financial statements, I do not believe rewarding them with this rezoning is a good idea. I'd much rather see the site sold to a developer who is willing to work within the RM4 zoning guidelines.
Okay. Thank you very much for being here to speak, Ms. Zuell. And no questions. We're on to speaker number six, Jeff Crompton, followed by Lisa Dandenios.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. So I've lived across from 807 East 8th for almost five years. Thanks. I'm not opposed to increasing density, but I am opposed to the on-average doubling in the rent. It's obviously hard to oppose a development from a not-for-profit society, but regardless of who the builder is, we can be sure that for this property, the average rent is going to go way up. So this is obviously going to be really hard hit on the community, but this is somehow being touted as affordable. So my question is this: how can we be sure that this is not setting an example for landlords in the community if the city says, sure, go ahead and neglect your property, and you too may qualify for demolition and rezoning that results in a 1.5 to two times increase in rent? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for being here. Lisa Dandenios. Speaker number seven. I'm not sure I've got your last name right. Is this, you are Lisa? If you could just come up to the mic, I'm not sure exactly what's...
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
There you go.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm here representing a strata just across the street. My name's Michelle Sangster, and Lisa Dandenios had to go, so I've been tasked with just sharing some impressions. So, good evening, thank you for the opportunity, mayor and council. I live across the street from the proposal on St. Catherine Street, where are three non-conforming strata, 2408 St. Catherine's to 2418. There's been a number of concerns that certainly we would echo. I think I just want to start with the premise that nobody's against the density. We are very compassionate towards the social housing conundrum and challenges, and as a strata in our discussion, what we'd like to really just pitch is to see some modifications and amendments. I think my first point goes to the welfare of the residents that are currently in place. There's some questions about the extent to which the building's been neglected. Is this still working? Yes? Okay. The extent to which the building's been neglected and what the impact is on residents. We've seen a number of children very recently just playing in the street, because there's on a dedicated play space in the area. I've seen a number of people moving in and out, which suggests to me there's tremendous instability in a socially mixed housing, which has an objective and intention to create community. And so I wonder if you have comings and goings in short-term vacancy, how does, how's that ultimately achieved? So for me, it calls into question, I guess, what the objectives are. I would just like to echo the track record financially of the Red Door Society, and we submitted to one of your staff on April 1st last year our concerns from our strata. And I just want to read you one of the points that was identified. Red Door, the current building, I understand, is not terribly old. It was built in 1985. We understand from Red Door Society that there has been mold and building envelope issues in existence, and after having evaluated for potential options, they're choosing a very costly rebuild, which I think has been echoed here in terms of the commitment to the LEED project. In our research as a strata, we understand that Red Door Society has financial information that they ran deficits in 2011, 2012, 2013, and only in 2014 did the revenues marginally exceed expenditure. So it seems unclear to us that Red Door Society has the financial resources, perhaps commitment and expertise from a project perspective, to really see this through in a way that's a benefit to those that it's intended to benefit, or be a benefit to. So the current building does need some work, but I guess, again, the question is, why has it been allowed to deteriorate into such a state of disrepair for so many years? And you can see it, and it's not just about the aesthetics, it's really about the people that live in that building with families. The number of them are, have the appearance of being maybe newcomers to Canada, and their safety, I think, is ultimate, is paramount, as is the safety of the community. So where is that commitment from Red Door Society to its valued customer and the end user? I think I'd just like to speak very quickly into the size of the project. I think everyone said we get the density, and we understand the need in the city for that. When I look at that, and I looked at the height, which I believe is just shy of 70 feet, and I'm on Fraser and Broadway, that's a really big building. That's so sizable, and to park that in that corner with a number of smaller units around, it really, to me, creates a slippery slope for developers, and it really reshapes the nature and the heartbeat of the community and of the area. We do, in our area, St. Catherine's and East 8th, we've got four developments that are going on concurrently. That's a lot of traffic, that's a lot of noise, that's a lot of disruption, a lot of instability for a little, small community to absorb. So I would just, you know, ask, how are we going to deal with that? Has that been considered? And if so, and I'd like to see more discussion on that. I have a couple of...
You've only got five minutes, if you could wrap up.
Yep. Couple of questions for consideration. What is the consultation process, then, with current residents? What does that look like going forward? Was the engagement strategy from developer and Red Door Society vis-à-vis neighbors? Showing and telling is an approach, but I don't know that that's going to be successful. What about the welfare of the tenants? How will that be preserved and protected? What will be the criteria for new tenants that are being brought in? And what are the measures that will be implemented to contain what will be burgeoning rezoning, I think, in the area? And also concerns about just infrastructure and impact? How will those be addressed going forward? So those are my questions. Thank you very much for your time and interest.
Thank you very much. And could you just give us your name again for the record?
Yeah, sorry. My name's Michelle. Last name is Sangster. And I'm a resident at 2408, representing 2408 St. Catherine's to 22418 St. Catherine's. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, Ms. Sangster. And that means we're on to speaker number eight, Deanne Zibert, followed by John Meyer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here from the Developmental Disabilities Association. So one of the things we've operated for over 30 years is a community apartment program for people with intellectual disabilities who live on their own in apartments, with approximately eight to 10 hours of support from us with life skills workers. One of the challenges has been, over the years, is where do we find housing? So traditionally, one-third of our residents owned apartments largely through family investment. One-third lived in cooperative housing. One of the challenges has been, over the years, is where do we find housing? So traditionally, one-third of our residents owned apartments largely through family investment. One-third lived in cooperative housing, and one-third have subsidies for market housing from BC Housing. So I'll address all three of those. As you know, market housing is astronomically difficult. Our subsidies from BC Housing, we haven't had one since the early 1990s, and we hang on to them only because we've had them for so long. The trend with BC Housing has been to develop whole buildings and SROs in the downtown east side, so they have not given out any, like, what we call scattered address subsidies in numerous years. So those are maximized. The other thing we're finding with market housing is we're facing eviction due to sale. Now, that's happening with low income, that's happening with high income. That happened to my parents this week, and two of our staff. So relying on commercial market rent can be very risky, because you face getting evicted all the time. Co-op housing hasn't been developed for decades, and there are extensive wait lists when we're lucky enough to get in. So two years ago, we...it's an informal partnership. I went to Red Door Housing and talked about our program, and you'd be surprised, but there are lots of housing operators who are not supportive of our clientele. Despite them being low-risk, I think there's a stereotype in community. Red Door opened their arms, and they've had two residents at this development, living there for...well, one lived for one year, one lived for two. We were aware of the condition of the building when they moved in. Now, to put it in perspective, one woman had lived in an SRO in the downtown east side. It was a palace in comparison. She also is a single mother of Aboriginal descent. She was under a monitoring agreement with MCFD, and this housing, plus our support, and kind of everyone working together, allowed her to keep her child. We were aware of the displacement. They also followed through and helped her find housing with Entre Nou Fem, and she's been housed and doing very well. The other resident, we found housing in a cooperative housing, which we had had a 20-year rental on when the person passed away. So...and my understanding is both of them would be welcome to move back in, and both would be able to afford it. That being said, because people with disabilities do get a slightly higher BC benefits rate, and both have found temporary...they have varying levels of employment to help subsidize their rent. So I'm strongly in favor of this application. As you know, there are...there's a desperate need for affordable housing. Our program could easily serve hundreds. We also have an extensive family support program that serves 200 families a year, and at least 100 of those, often new immigrants, but people with children with a disability also seeking housing. So there's a desperate need for affordable housing all across Vancouver. And we don't want the only option to be, when you're single, that you must live in the downtown east side. So we're very supportive of this project. I think that...oh, I also wanted to speak to some of the neglect I've been hearing. I know, as a nonprofit, BC Housing operating agreements often don't pay for the maintenance of buildings beyond, especially when there's disasters and flooding, and I presume that's been built in, so I think sometimes a new build can overcome some of the disadvantages of policy 25 years ago. So that's it. And I'm very supportive of nonprofit housing in the city of Vancouver. Not all developers do it, or want people like my clients in their properties. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for being here tonight. Speaker number nine is next, John Meyer, followed by Jessica McLennan. Yep, help yourself.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. Generally, I'd say I'm opposed to this development due to the height of the building. It doesn't really fit in with the character of the neighborhood as a whole. In my experience, I've found neighborhoods with three, four, or five-story buildings to be very pleasant areas to live in. It's generally you have enough green space, it's not too crowded, there'll be enough amenities where people can walk to anything that they need. If...in my opinion, that if someone wants a development exception, there should be more justification than what is provided. The only document I saw was two pages long. The first page had four options for the current place, and the second page had current and future rents. And in the justification, it was basically two sentences for each thing. I'd like to see a more detailed financial breakdown as to why this is the only viable option. It's really confusing for me to sit...for someone to say that it's not viable to redevelop this at the same height with approximately the same number of units, when there's multiple buildings being redeveloped in, you know, two or three-block area. Maybe that's not necessarily Red Door Society's fault, maybe that lies with the city not providing adequate funding for social housing. Or it could lie with Red Door Society. Either way, I think a more detailed justification needs to be provided as to why this is the only route to take. I guess that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thanks very much for being here tonight. Jessica McLennan is next, followed by Gord R.
Hi, good evening. I like to say that I'm opposed to this development. I live one block east of there, and it's just out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. And my concern is...the term was "development creep" that someone...
Zoning creep.
Zoning creep. Yeah, it's something seven stories high just sort of looms over every other home in the neighborhood. And my fear is, is that in 10 years' time, it's just going to be nine, 10, 12 stories that are looming over all of the smaller homes that will still remain in the neighborhood. I think density is great, but why does this particular building have to be seven stories tall? What's something wrong with something maybe shorter and squatter? But anyways, that's my particular reason for disliking this particular development and not wanting it in my neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up is, and the last registered speaker, Gord R. Have you got a last name for the public record?
I prefer just to keep it as R, if that's okay.
What's that? Yeah, we need it for the minutes, because it's a public hearing.
There's no...there's no option for not doing that? No.
R-I-S-C-H, okay. Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is my first time at a...can this go up a bit? This is my first time at a council meeting. I wasn't going to speak, but my experience being here for the first time, I understand there's been some changes made to the process. And I came here around 5:30, and I went to the back door, and it was locked. I thought, oh, well, I got this notice that it's a public hearing. Why is the door locked? So I went to the front door, it was locked too. Nobody around, I'm going...so I looked at the thing, and I said, "Am I at the right address?" And I looked around, and I said, "Yeah, I am." So I came back 10 minutes later, and there was a security guard inside the locked door. So I knocked on the door, and I said, "Public hearing, can I come to the public hearing?" And he said, "Oh, yes, sure, come on in." But I wonder how many other people came to the door, saw it locked, and didn't know what was going on, and just left? Like, the process seems very odd to me. I've been to other municipalities, other towns, public hearings, never have I encountered anything like that. So then, we enter a room, and some blue, foldable, cheap, plastic chairs. We sit down, and I'm wondering what's going on. Why am I not sitting in the council chambers? And I said, "Well, because you're not speaking." And I said, "Well, I could have...I could have sat in my home on a comfortable chair and watched this, instead of sitting on this cheap, plastic chair in a hot room, watching a monitor." So why does it not say on here, "Public hearing"? Unless you want to speak, you're not allowed in. And then I'm told, "Oh, this is the first time." So I'm not impressed with the process, the notification. It says "public hearing," and I feel it's not really public. It's exclusionary, it's not serving...I'm sure there's reasons, but at least let us know that if we're going to come down here, we're going to sit in cheap, blue, plastic chairs and watch a monitor, instead of staying at home watching it on our TV. As far as the projects is concerned, I did submit some notes, or an email, and when I contacted the Red Door Society, I was told that market rents would be 100% of the building, even though the planning department said 30% must be below market rent. I agree the building is in disrepair, and it's mostly because this building is what I consider a leaky condo that doesn't want to get fixed, and that, based on that, City Hall needs to give these Red Door people more density, so that they can make it worthwhile. That's great, but what is it doing to the neighborhood? Is the neighborhood going to...like, say, there's already one building for sale on Prince Albert and Broadway, and they're already advertising, well, like this fellow said here, that, yes, it looks like you're going to get some more density than what it is. That's why we're selling it. I'm disappointed in the public process, how it...my experience here, and I have my doubts on the Red Door Society completing this project, also because I've been told after two years, they will be losing their funding from...wherever they get their funding from, I don't know how they're going to maintain the building without that funding. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight, and persevering through the challenges. There have been recent public hearings, there's been huge crowds, and we've actually had to manage the number of people coming into the chambers, and tonight, not as many people showed up, so apologies for the confusion around that. So we are at the end of our registered speakers list, so I'll call three times. Are there more people here to speak to item number four? Oh, okay. Christopher Summer? Is Christopher Summer here? No, he was here earlier. Did you have...you can step up to speak, if you'd like to speak on this, yeah. But I don't have any more names written down here. If you could give us your name for the record, that would be great.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Marilyn Hogan. I'm Chair of the COPE Housing Committee, and I'm also a member of the group Residents for Community Control on City Development, and I oppose this application for rezoning at 870 East 8th by Red Door Housing Society. And I have a whole bunch of concerns. Is our time correct here? Because it says three...
No, I'm just resetting that. Okay.
Sorry, but I'll try to be succinct. I always try. All right, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. So there's...I used to live in this neighborhood, near 12th and Windsor, not too far away from 8th and St. Catherine. And I took a little tour of the neighborhood again today on my way over here, just to kind of review what I thought I already knew, which is that most of the buildings are about three stories. And then there's this big, massive Rise Building going in at 8th and Broadway, rather, Broadway and Kingsway. So there's already a tremendous amount of densification in the neighborhood, and that does concern me, because this is one of the few neighborhoods that currently really have, like, really actual low rents for people on fixed incomes. And if this building goes in as proposed, those rents will go up significantly, I think. And granted, I'm all in favor of social housing, but you can have social housing without having huge rents. I mean, I actually think the city's done a pretty good job with the modular housing that was put in near the Skytrain station, and I've heard some good feedback from people about that. So it's possible to do it and keep rents really low, and it doesn't look like that's really going to necessarily be the case here if this is approved. And I've heard a lot of objection tonight. I know that your online records say that you had received 20 comments in favor of the application and only one against, and that, I think, needs to be adjusted, especially given the fact that one of my colleagues here has a petition of 30 people opposed to it, and all the people who've spoken against it already here. So the current tenants being dem-evicted, they're not likely to be able to afford to go in there, and like other landlords who allow buildings to go into disrepair, this landlord, according to neighbors who you've heard from, has had a bad track record. But more important than that, I think, and also, I do think that it's important to address the issue of people having their viewscape eliminated or shading. I think those are legitimate views from neighbors, and I know that the council really looked very seriously at that when some residents in Marpall didn't like a new building shading ...or the proposed building shading their properties. So that is legitimate. But I think even more important than that is, there is...has been, I think, a lack of general public awareness about this throughout the broader area in the city, and I don't think there's been enough community input. It kind of reminds me of the recent Chinatown issue, the building that was almost twice the height of the immediate surroundings, and a lot of objection to that, and City Council did vote that down, and I'm grateful for that. I think the character of a neighborhood has to be taken into account, the wishes of the immediate neighborhoods really have to be looked at. But my biggest concern on this, I think, is that putting in...allowing a building like this will pave the way for a whole lot more buildings, more densification in a neighborhood that is becoming very dense with the new big condo that's going in at Broadway. I mean, there's going to be a tremendous amount of extra pressure on city resources and transit and so on there. So if we start having a whole bunch of new, very large mass buildings going in in that neighborhood, it...this could...this one could just maybe pave the way for that extra densification that the city, I don't think, can handle, and for gentrification, which really concerns me, because where are these people going to go, who can afford these lower rents? We don't have that many neighborhoods in Vancouver that still have that, and I really strongly urge you to look at that when considering this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for being here to speak, and I'll call...are there any more speakers for item number four? Final call, any more speakers for item number four? You used up your time precisely, actually. Yeah, you nailed it.
I just feel like I did a bad job. I was too angry.
No, you were right on the money with your timing, so...we have one more speaker? Please.
Everyone can hear me? I'm Susan Snell. I'm the Executive Director of Red Door Housing Society, and we are the ones that have brought this proposal forward. I've heard a lot about the condition of the building. This building was leaking pretty much from day one, and it's part of the whole leaky condo situation. The problem with the society, when they run into that, is they don't have the funds, so that we...they were patching it throughout the years. So that's why it's in the condition it's in now. As far as the tenants that we've relocated, they're in...they are living right now... As far as the tenants that we've relocated, they are living right now, three-quarters are gone. They're living in either less rent or the same, and they're living in a high-rise in downtown Vancouver on the water. We are looking after everyone. We're going to make sure that everyone has a home and a good home. I have a few left, but I'm going to make sure that they all have homes. We did our due diligence. We looked at the whole process. We figured out that we had three choices. We could sell to a developer. You're going to lose the social housing. We could fix it up. We're going to have to raise the rents to do that, because it would cost us a lot of money, and we've only got 22 poorly designed units. Or we could do what we're planning to, we're trying to do, is redevelop and add to the neighborhood. There was some comment about the condition of the building and some police incidents, and there was one recently, and we cleaned it up the moment we heard about it. So I think we're a good landlord, and we're trying our best, but the building is in really poor condition, and it's a leaky condo that's gone on too long. I appreciate everyone here, and I understand that it will change the neighborhood, but I think in the end it will change it for the better. And all of our tenants have the opportunity to come back, and we will make it work. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. You have questions, actually, before you head off. Counselor Jiang has questions for you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for coming. I've heard a lot from the opponents of the project talking about rents and unaffordability, and this was a demo eviction. And so I'm asking you, tell me about your tenants. Because I understand that many have different types of grants, and, you know, although on paper it says this is how much the rent is or will be, and people are saying they can't afford it, but I understand in my own work in social services that people are on different grants. Could you describe to me, like, your typical, if there's such a thing, tenant?
I don't think there is a typical tenant. A lot of the tenants that we had originally, we have moved and relocated already. Three-quarters are relocated. And some of them are lower end of market, because we did income testing, and they make good money. And some of them are subsidized through the contract we have at that building, which is going to be for another 30 years. So they'll be safe. They'll have subsidized housing as long as they need it. Some people can apply for RAP, which is Assistance Through B.C. Housing, or seniors can apply for SAFER. But the majority of, a lot of our tenants moved in as market in that building. That was not a fully subsidized building. I've heard some people mention that it's, that we have people living there that are driving big cars and that. Yeah, some people do make really good money, and they went in there as a market renter when it wasn't the most desirable area. It has improved over the last three or four years, but they went in there and they do make good money. But they're also being rehomed where we can. Some of them are going to buy their own homes. But that was a mixed building. It was not a fully subsidized building.
Okay. I think that explains things. And you do do income testing. I was looking at, some had noticed, had mentioned an issue that was in the papers, and I looked it up here. And in fact, because you did income testing, you realized somebody was, had $30,000 or something like this, and you essentially had to have them evicted, and it was upheld.
Yes. That's exactly what happened. We caught them not disclosing all the income. And we do quite extensive income verifications.
Right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Carr, you have questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I really appreciate the fact that you have come and spoken. One question that I had was around some statements made by some of the speakers that the rents will double. Can you give me an estimation or projection of what will happen to rents once the building is reoccupied, the new building?
The rents will be varied. There will be, a lot of them, they're quite, are quite low. I think our estimate is around between seven and nine for a one-bedroom. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but they will be, they will be lower, and the majority of our people will be able to come back. There will be some market rents, and there will be some market rents that are over $2,000, but they're three-bedroom. And in the city of Vancouver, what is a three-bedroom going to cost you as a market? Ours is going to be lower than market.
So your market rents are lower than market?
They're lower end of market, all of the market rents.
Right. And how many of the units, including the new units, the additional units, do you expect will be able to be subsidized, i.e., social housing through subsidies from B.C. Housing?
Well, they'll have to qualify for RAP or SAFER. We won't be offering any subsidy, because we won't be getting any.
And you did explain a moment ago that you have a 30-year agreement--
That's at another building--
Oh, okay.
Where three-quarters of the Macassa original tenants, that we're not renting, we're not evicting them. We've moved them over to another building where they will have subsidy for 30 years. It's one of the projects, there's four in our portfolio, that will have a subsidy for another, I believe it's 30 years. The rest of all of our buildings are losing subsidy in the next five to seven years. So we're going to have to do, we're going to have to find a way to keep people--
Is that under the old government, the old provincial government?
All the contracts are expiring.
Hmm. Well, we do have a new incoming government.
We do. We have our fingers crossed.
Yeah, okay. So I just, I'm a little unclear about the last statement you made. So of the people coming back in, first of all, are all the people who are currently there able to come back in, i.e., there's an opportunity for them to come back in?
I would say 90%.
Okay. What happened to the 10%? Why--
They have been already housed in subsidized housing. I don't know that they will qualify, but I can't say for sure. We'd have to reincome test everyone, but everyone that needs subsidy is getting subsidy. In fact, some of them are lower than what they were at Macassa.
Okay. And your building, the new building, would include market rent?
It would be lower end, yeah.
Lower end of market rent. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Stevenson, questions?
Thanks very much. We heard one of the speakers talk about pit bulls on the loose and thefts.
There was, yes. There was a tenant that we brought in, and he did bring in pit bulls. And I believe the gentleman that spoke got in touch with us, and we had him move out. It does take a while under the tenancy, residential tenancy, but we did move him out. Yes.
What about the problems around theft and so on?
Well, there was an instance where the gate, the gate to the garage was broken, and once we found out about it, we did fix it, and it is fixed. I mean, if tenants are coming and going and not saying anything, and we don't discover it right away, it could go for a while before it got fixed, but we fixed it the moment we found--
Basically, these issues you heard about and dealt with right away?
Right away.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Reimer, questions?
Yeah, a quick question. You may not have an answer for it, and I can appreciate if that's the case. If council were to say no to this tonight, you had three options. Does it send you back to the drawing board, or have you already kind of thought through what the other option is for you?
As far as redevelopment?
Yeah. Well, if we say no, does that push you towards sale or--
It probably pushes us towards sale.
Right. That makes--
We pretty much put quite a bit into the project, and we are a small society. I'm not sure, it would be a board decision, not mine, but I'm sure that they would look at it, that we've taken a big risk here, and we'd have to think seriously about what we would do with the project. But right now, I can't really honestly answer it, because it wouldn't be my decision.
It's not entirely a fair question, but I'm guessing there was, yeah, in the reviewing of options, there may have been some, something that's useful for us to consider. So, thank you.
Okay. That is your questions.
Thank you very much.
For being here to speak and answer questions. Are there any more speakers for item number four? Step right up. You give us your name for the record, please.
First name Mullen, last name Bus. Is the only way to provide affordable housing in the city to sacrifice another amenity? Because that seems to be the only formula that we're, you know-- That's not so much a statement as a question, but it is a question. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts. Are there any other speakers for this item? Okay. So we're finished with the speakers list on this one. We'll close that, and as we've had a few comments since 5:00 P.M., the public comment period as well, and we'll go to closing comments from staff and the applicant team. Staff, we'll just take questions. Okay. Applicant team, did you wish to make a closing statement?
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity. My name's Graham Plant. I'm working with Red Door Housing Society on this project specifically, and I want to thank the public for their participation this evening. I think a lot of the opponents to the project have actually identified some of the real key concerns with creating affordability. But we've heard about height, we've heard about density, we've heard about rent increases. These are challenges that Red Door has been dealing with since day one on this project. We are truly and honestly doing our best to provide the best balance of a non-market housing building, where all the rents are below market while still providing low rents to the tenants that Red Door has been housing for years now. So I would just like to say that Red Door Housing, in our experience, has been an excellent society to work with. I think they were dealt a bad hand with this building. I understand that maintenance has been a concern, and the condition of the building is a concern as well. But actually, one item I would like to address, too, there will be a replacement reserve contained within the operating budget of this building that will ensure that maintenance issues are dealt with in a different way than they were in the previous iteration of this building. So thank you for the opportunity, and much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you very much. You may have questions. We'll see where it goes here. So, but thank you for the statement, and we're on to questions. Counselor Jiang is first.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gray. A question for our housing staff, I think. You can sit down. Yeah. Dan was just desperately waiting for a question from me, because I've been sitting here all this time. Usually, in our reports, we do get a better idea of what the rents might be, and in this particular case, it was a little vague in places, and this was picked up by a number of speakers tonight. Could you tell me why? Or provide some background on that?
All right. I'm just looking for the page where the rents are discussed.
Yeah, it was just page eight, is what I got.
Yeah. So we didn't go into a lot of detail in this report on what the rents are. What we have done is, we've looked at the project in two ways, around rents and around requirements for affordability. One of them is to first and foremost meet the base definition of social housing that the city has set, so a minimum of 30% of the units needing to rent below the housing income limits. We then looked at the fundamental proposal in front of us, which is to say, to replace 22 units that are subsidized, for the most part are low-rent units. So we've bumped up the requirement for subsidized units that will be secured through a housing agreement to say that at least a minimum of the replacement units must be subsidized. So we've approached it, it's partly because these projects where we don't, it's not a traditional social housing project in the old sense of the word, where it's sort of government-led on city land with B.C. housing funding and those sorts of things. It's a nonprofit-led project. So as I think the applicants have alluded to, these are challenging projects from a financial perspective to bring together. What we haven't wanted to do is absolutely, to a finite detail, nail down what those rents are, because they're going, they may need some degree of flexibility as they move towards completion of the project to ensure that the level of affordability they're delivering is financially viable. But we have, so that's why we've taken the approach of setting what the base level of affordability would be, which is at a minimum, the 22 units they're replacing will be subsidized, and then the additional 29 will work with the applicant to look to deliver the greatest level of affordability possible.
So in your opinion, in all your hard work on housing, you don't see any difficulties with some level of affordability of the additional units? I mean, they're not going skyrocketing high to subsidize the lower rent units?
No. In fact, the society has indicated that they're looking at subsidizing a higher number of units, a higher proportion than we've actually secured as their interest. We just want to ensure they have some flexibility around making that work. But I think both with the discussions they're having with B.C. housing around some funding, with the potential for the city also has capital grants to support nonprofits in this, and we do expect them to come forward to us with a request for that. We expect them to be able to deliver a reasonably high level of affordability, and we are, you know, satisfied with what they're putting forward in terms of the level of affordability they're proposing for a project where they're really bringing together all the capital funding on their own.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Very helpful.
So Counselor Carr's next with questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions, but I'll start with, most of my housing questions have been answered, but I have one left. So if the housing agreement that is part of this application calls for, as you said, a minimum of all the current units, the 22, that's the, so the replacement units, will be subsidized, does that not mean that there's, there will be more subsidized than currently in the building, because all the current 22 aren't subsidized, are they?
Yeah, that's true. Although all the 22 current units are relatively low rents compared to the market, it's a bit of a, what market rent is in a building that was built in the mid-'80s, and obviously with some challenges in the way it was initially built, those rents may still be relatively low. So we did want to see the level of affordability that exists on the site today reflected in the new project to the greatest extent possible.
Okay. And the applicant did make a verbal statement that the rest of the units, and the new 29 units, will be below market to varying degrees. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, absolutely. And many nonprofit societies do that, because it's part of their, you know, existence as a nonprofit and/or charity around needing to demonstrate that they are actually below market in terms of the product they're providing.
Thank you. My next question is about height. And so I am wondering what authority we have. It's fairly vague, the wording around the Mount Pleasant Plan in this document, but what authority do we have to be able to increase the height to 70 feet or seven stories?
You're correct. The Mount Pleasant Community Plan does not include specific policy for the RM4 district. That is to say, the intent of the plan was that the RM4 district is anticipated to redevelop under existing zoning. This application is coming in under the citywide affordable housing policies, which, again, is to help achieve the social housing objectives. Consideration of rezoning in this district would only be available on a case-by-case basis where a social housing project is being proposed. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, absolutely. As a follow-up, though, the citywide affordable housing policies talk about the increased height and density, but height in particular, being available to projects that are located on arterials or near transit. So I'm assuming that it's the location of this site, close to, well, a block away from Broadway and Fraser, that enables the, that provides the authority to council to increase that height under the citywide housing policies. Is that, am I on the right track on that?
The application is assessed based on contextual fit and urban design response.
I think another consideration in this particular case is its location with respect to transit and location. People have mentioned the hub at Kingsway and Broadway, but Broadway corridor, of course, is a highly-served transit route. And we shouldn't forget that this is probably a five-minute walk, albeit up and down a significant hill, but to the station at Clark and Great Northern Way.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. I have one final question, and that is, some of the speakers raised issues of beyond traffic and the deterioration of the street. And so in terms of transportation-related, I mean, local transportation, I'm wondering about whether there's any intention around street improvements. I haven't gone out and seen that street, but that was indicated to us. And also about the sort of traffic management plan with an increase-- plan with an increased number of units.
Thanks for the question, Counselor. John Turecki with Transportation. In terms of the street condition, the street is not in a great condition. It doesn't have curb and gutter. However, there are sidewalks on both sides. In terms of replacing sidewalks or adding new curb and gutter, there is a prioritization exercise that is done within the Streets Department. That usually looks at areas where there's other ongoing work, other utility replacements or along major arterials. So, that program wouldn't look at the street as necessarily the highest of priorities. As part of this development, though, there will be a provision of curb and gutter along that section of St. Catherine's as well as new sidewalks and paving to the center line, and that's what we're comfortable requesting from a social housing project.
Okay, and I think I'm over, though. Just if you want to answer the question about the...
In terms of traffic, and, yeah, so with a parking provision of about 26 parking spaces in the underground here and about 50 units, we wouldn't anticipate any kind of meaningful traffic impacts from, from this development.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Counselor Reimer, questions?
Yes, sorry, following up on the housing policy, I'm not, I'm more used to the plans where there's like absolute maximums and that. So, as I read the Mount Pleasant Plan, it says, "Additional housing opportunities allow increased housing density in Mount Pleasant near transit hubs, commercial centers, parks, arterial streets and/or streets within your parts with adequate provision, or leading to the provision of public services like schools, parks, childcare, community centers, and transit." And so, we've talked about transit at some length. There was some discussion about parks. I actually used to live at Seventh and St. Catherine's, so my memory, like Sahale's, right, maybe not even a block. You've got China Creek North, Mount Pleasant, I think it's called Dude Chilling Park now, as well as an elementary school. Is that, give or take, that's the local, within three to four blocks? Yes, okay. So, we heard from the society that there was a potential, well, I guess whether we heard that or not, so there's this option for the, the proposed rezoning, but what could an owner do with the site other, if we said no to this rezoning, what happens with the site? What could happen with the site?
So, Dan Garrison from Housing. If the, if the site was to, say theoretically, be sold and there is another owner of the site, it is, the, the fundamental policies that apply are the RM4 zoning, obviously, for what you can do around height and density, but also the rental housing stock official development plan does apply. So, it could be redeveloped for rental housing, but all the units would need to be replaced. However, those units would have no affordability requirements associated with them. So, I think that's one of the attractive elements of the proposal from the housing perspective, is that we are seeing an increase in the number of rental units, but also a maintenance of the affordability sort of character of the project.
So, the province controls rent rates and tenant relocation, except in the case of a rezoning, in which case we have some ability to work with the proponent, as is the case here?
Yes, when we're providing additional development rights, we do that in exchange for a housing agreement where we can, the city has the authority to control things like rents and, and other aspects of the project.
If a developer came in, bought the property, they, they must provide 22 units of housing, but they could be thousands of dollars a month each and no requirement to relocate the, the existing tenants?
But there would be tenant relocation requirements, as we have with all redevelopment of rental housing in the city, but there would be no affordability requirements in the new project.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, that is all the questions on the queue. So, we've completed the question period for staff. A member of council wished to take next steps. Counselor Jiang?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you to all the people who came out from the neighborhood and talked to us about their concerns about the project, and thanks to the applicant, Red Door, and our staff for all their hard work. I listened very carefully, and I think it was reflected in the questions that us had to, certainly I had to staff about the Red Door Society and the level of affordability, but I was satisfied with the actions with the answers, so I'm going to move the recommendations as presented. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion moving the recommendations. Counselor Stevenson seconds that. Counselor Carr speaking to the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak to the motion. I do want to also thank all those people who came to speak and also those people who communicated with us via email and by petition. We actually had a number of people email us and provide petitions, both for and against the project. The correspondence was 47 pieces in support and four opposed. Tonight, there were more people opposed, speaking. But just so that you know, that there, there was a fairly robust number of people who took the time and the effort to express their, their points of view, as I say, both pro and con on this. I, I also am very interested in the issue of affordability and height as well. So, those were questions that I followed up with staff. I appreciate staff's answer and also the applicant's speaking to the issue and the Red Door Society speaking to, to us as well and answering questions. So, regarding questions of affordability, I think that there is some potentially misinformation in terms of the number of units that will be available to people who, who need subsidized housing. The agreement that has been signed and is part of this application is that all the full number of current units will be available at subsidy in the, in the new building. And, and that's potentially, although the, the prices, the gross prices may be more, with the subsidies, those people will pay over 30% of, of their income on the, on that housing. So, they will be affordable rents that will be in place. And both in the report and in answers to questions, we've heard clearly that the other rents will be below market. And indeed, when you're talking, though, about, I mean, that's still, it could be high. We know that market rents are not, not cheap in Vancouver. But I think there, there appears to be, from, from my point of view, a commitment to, to have those rents be as at a, as much a below-market rent as possible, along with the subsidized rents that are absolutely committed. I also just wanted to, there was concerns raised by speakers about the relocation of people and rent evictions, and it appears to me from the comments that we've received back that the individuals have been relocated at either par or below the rent that they've currently got, or they've, they've, they've had in the building, which I think is a remarkable achievement. Regarding, so I'm satisfied on the issue of, of will this be affordable. In a city that is challenged so deeply around affordability, I think the plans we've been presented are laudable plans in, in the affordability realm. In terms of the height, a little nervous about the fact that there's no real authority in the Mount Pleasant Plan around this. It, as, as has been stated, the plan is, is rather vague. However, there is a, with the exception of saying that more height and density will be permitted around housing development. So, I guess the authority really comes down to the plans and policies that we have around increasing, the densification, the height and density of buildings that deliver affordable housing, along arterials in particular, near transit, and near the kinds of amenities that have been talked about in the, in the plan, the public amenities like parks, et cetera. So, I think that on the balance of it, I will be supporting this project. I think it does meet objectives around delivering more affordability, and I think that there are long-term expectations, especially with a reserve for maintenance, that, that meet other concerns that have been raised by the speakers that, that have come tonight, that give me the confidence that this is going in the right direction.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Carr. Counselor Deal?
Yes, thanks very much. I will be supporting this recommendation, this development, and I, most of the reasons I've been giving, I just wanted to say that I acknowledge and thank you for coming out. It is a big change. It's a bigger building than you used to. It's not what you expected, and I, I understand that. It's also very close to transit in both directions. It's, it's got all kinds of amenities nearby as have been expressed, and it's housing. It's housing for people who really need housing. And what I wanted to add to what's already been said is that, thanking everyone for coming out, and again, Red Door is saying that they've heard what you've said and that they can see where they need to make sure that they're taking care of some of the concerns that they've heard. But that's a leaky condo. I mean, look at the building. It's pretty obvious that that's what the history of it is. It's a, if you've been in Vancouver long enough, you know how to recognize those from a block away. But I wanted to thank the staff, and I want to thank Red Door. This is a, it's rare that we can have this kind of a project come forward where you're internally managing a lot of the issues that we often need external help to manage in terms of keeping people in their homes and the rent, and the rent adjustments and the subsidies and, and the maintenance. So, this is a very creative approach. It's an approach that's going to create lots of housing in an area where people like to live, that's close to transit. You can get around the town very easily from there. And I just wanted to thank everybody for bringing forward a proposal that, while I understand is, is a significant change for the neighbors, is bringing a huge plus to us in terms of being able to provide housing for people who need it, of different variety of incomes. And I think that once the people have moved in, the neighbors will find them quite a, quite a good asset for the neighborhood. So, thanks to everyone for their involvement.
Thank you, Counselor Deal, and I don't have any more speakers. I'll just add my voice in support of the, the recommendation and the proposal coming forward. Again, thanking the speakers and all the, the input, which I think is, is really important going forward. This building's not built yet. There's a lot of change yet to come. The construction impacts, a number of people flagged concerns about all the construction and neighborhood. Obviously, that needs to be carefully managed and impact on traffic, transportation, and on the neighborhood generally. I think as it goes through development permit and the refining stages of approvals, and, and then into, into construction and occupancy, there's some important steps for the community, the neighborhood surrounding, to be involved and engaged in. So, appreciate the number of people that have been involved, that are tracking this and paying attention. I, I'm obviously supporting it for the same reasons. Counselor Deal, I think, just articulated, and others, the importance of more affordable housing, and this is a neighborhood that's, has lots of affordable housing, and some buildings like this that are getting to the end of their lifespan, and, and we need, we need more affordable housing there. And I think Red Door and the team have done a great job of, of doing a mixed income project here. It will be more people on that footprint than, than might have been anticipated, but I think it will be, it should be a really lively mix of people and, and bring some more energy to the neighborhood. Just, I think as we go through the next stages, need to be sensitive to how exactly that happens. And, and as we go forward in, in the neighborhood, there's, there's, it's a great neighborhood. It's got a lot of diversity, a lot of character, and we want to make sure changes like this, you know, one building at a time, have to be carefully thought through and, and make sure that neighbors are involved. And all the concerns that are being flagged are legitimate and need to be, need to be factored into the decisions being made. So, thanks for, for everyone being involved and, and bringing your opinions forward, and we'll look forward to trying to manage the change and the growth pressures and the affordability issues as best we can. We, we certainly need more places for, for people to live that, that do live and work in the city and, and are having trouble with that. So, I'll be voting in support, and we are ready to go. Unless, Counselor Jiang, you wanted any closing comments? You're good. We're ready to go to the vote on this one. And we have nine, nine of us voting, all nine votes in favor. So, we had unanimous support. Thanks again to everyone for coming and to the applicants and staff for the work brought forward to the hearing tonight. And we are on to our final item on the agenda, item number five. This is the rezoning for 4138 Camby Street. And Madam Clerk, can you please read the, the application, the summary of correspondence received?
This is an application to rezon 4138 Camby Street from RS1, one-family dwelling district to CD1 comprehensive development district to permit the development of a six-story residential building and two two-story townhouses containing a total of 22 dwelling units. A height of 20.5 meters and a floor space ratio of 2.31 are proposed. The general manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions as set out in the summary and recommendation of the public hearing agenda. Council has received no correspondence on this application since it was referred to public hearing.
Okay, thanks very much. And we have Tiffany Rugo here from, to present the application from planning, and we don't have any speakers registered on this. So, we, we good to wave the presentation, given that?
Willing to wave, yes.
Okay, we're going to wave the presentation, and...
I got it ready.
We may have questions for you, though.
Yes.
So, is the applicant, Kevin Hussey, Penny Farthing Development here, wish to make, you want to make any opening comments?
No, I just want to share the fact.
Okay, so we'll have any questions from council or staff or the applicant? No questions. You guys are getting off easy so far. And that means we'll go to hear from speakers. If there are any speakers here, we're none registered, but I'll call three times. Are there any speakers here for item number five? Are there any speakers here for item number five? Final call, speakers for number five. Seeing none, we'll close the speakers list, and with no comments since 5:00 PM, we'll close the public comment period. Any closing comments from staff?
No.
None, and any comments from our applicants? Any final questions? Counselor Louis, did you have questions?
No, I am prepared to move the recommendation.
Okay, Counselor Louis moves. Counselor Jiang seconds. Any discussion from council or debate on the motion? We're ready to go for a vote on item number five. That's a new record.
[laughing]
Speed voting. Okay, all nine votes in favor, unanimous support on item number five. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Applicants and staff for the good work to bring that forward without any, any apparent friction. The neighborhood is obviously... Okay, we're, that means we are completed our agenda, all five items, and that means we need a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, carries. This public hearing is adjourned. Good night.